I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is the public hearing for the fiscal 2020-21 budget, so anybody can come up, please give your name and address to the clerk. Anybody wishing to start? Yes?
Can you read the, I would review the ground.
My name is Mark Antinazzi. I've been living here just about twenty years.
I'm Spohly Kloski. And your address?
Twenty-one Fannhill in town.
Thank you.
Your dad was the architect of this building, if I remember correctly?
Excuse me?
Your dad was the architect of this?
Yeah, back in sixty-four.
There you go.
We also did St. Jude's and a few other things in town. But nonetheless, I've been living here about twenty years, and I served on different town committees, on the Architectural Review Board, planning and zoning, as well as the Board of Education. All right, so therefore, when I come here today, I'm coming here because I'm concerned. I really am concerned. I wouldn't normally do this, but I have a few little notes, so I can take them out. Okay, I'm attending this meeting because it deals with the projected budget and how to hopefully reduce it. Well, the problem that exists today is going to be happening year after year and after year. We are not making progress. Instead, we are slipping into a pit of economic despair. Background: When the Educational Enhancement Act was passed in nineteen eighty-six, it was passed to provide a better life for teachers here in Connecticut. And I remember it because I was a teacher back in nineteen seventy at Harding High School, and I had an annual salary of forty-seven hundred dollars a year. I taught for six years at Harding, and I rounded it out to fourteen thousand dollars a year. So I have a background of that. Anyway, every year since, however, union contracts have added percentage after percentage to teachers' salaries to where we are today. For instance, the new teachers' contract provides for a two-point-eight-nine percent increase the first year, three percent increase tacked on that for the second year, and another three percent tacked on that for the third year. That means if you have just one hundred teachers, and believe me, we have them, who are earning over one hundred thousand dollars a year, that at an average salary, the cost of the town in the first year will be two-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars more, the second year, an increase to five-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand dollars, and the third year, an increase to nine-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars. The total expense for these hundred teachers and administrators combined would be ten million, nine-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars in the third year alone. That equates to a nine-point-one-five-six compounded interest versus a reported eight-point-nine. The numbers don't lie. Likewise, the deal made by the Board of Ed to reduce the teachers' health insurance contribution to eighteen percent is ludicrous compared to the percentage of contributions in industry. For ten years after I left Harding High School, I worked in personnel. I worked in the factories in Bridgeport. I worked in a electronics firm down in Stanford. My job was insurances. I know what used to be of existence. I knew what we had in our family firm, which I was the financial director for the past thirty-two years, when I retired in two thousand and ten. Now, the problem we have with the insurance cost overrun is primarily based upon the lack of equitable contribution by the people who benefit from it. Understand? This means they are benefiting, but they are not contributing to the problem. Now, the teachers whose positions are safe, they don't have to worry about any of this stuff because they have a contract by the union. The only alternative to solving this problem is to eliminate the cost of younger teachers who have hopes and dreams to hopefully do some good for the town, as well as programs to be cut. Now, while some programs are safe, football, for instance, most others are not. And this also includes curriculum choices for students, for example, Latin. I had Latin when I went to Hopkins. But if we eliminate Latin as associate instructor, that wouldn't impact credibility of our school system of MASC. It wouldn't impact it at all. But here you have a savings of a considerable number of dollars. Unfortunately, the reported efforts to reduce the school budget this year, it's only going to be transferred to subsequent years. We're going to have the same problem next year and the year after that because of the cost of teachers and programs. Well, we are just basically hiding our heads in the sand, thinking that we can go year after year, the same thing, without change. We have to do something. It'll get worse. It's my opinion that the town, with the Board of Education's assistance, should investigate every avenue that they can eliminate non-essential programs and staff. Then, if the union contract cannot be reopened, prepare for a battle tooth and nail for the next union contract. Because if we don't do this, this town is going to be bankrupt. And it's not just happening here, ladies and gentlemen. It's happening in all these towns. The unions have taken control, unfortunately to our detriment. You remember, there's one Connecticut Teachers Union. There are a hundred and, what, sixty-seven different towns? Who do you think these arbitrators are going to be in favor of? One union who's going to hire them or a hundred and sixty-seven different towns that may or may not? We really should think twice about saying, oh, we're not going to go to arbitration, we're afraid. We should do something. Tooth and nail, we should fight. And that's, well, thank you for putting up with me tonight.
Thank you.
I really appreciate you listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, too.
Mrs., well, Mrs. Frost, please. No, Mrs. Frost, you can be next. Name, address?
Marion, M-A-R-I-O-N Frost, three forty-four Old Zor Road. My husband and I have lived in Monroe for about twenty years, and I guess we're an anomaly because we have no children, and we came to town not attracted by the school system, simply attracted by Monroe. We were present, Steve and I, in this room about on bonding for basic town necessities that directly impact all of our property values. I was expecting a large turnout when I wrote this, and I said it's somewhat disconcerting that less than people, fifty voters, were present at that town meeting, but here we are. But it's even more disconcerting to me that important items such as safe and drivable roads over which our families travel and over which business patrons and prospective home buyers in our home, in our town pass, and also fire trucks, ambulances, and communication equipment are not included in our regular operating budget and need to be bonded. As we all benefit from these critical items, they deserve as much budgeted attention as the schools. I'm aware of a number of people who are incensed and outraged at the proposal of nearly six percent spending increase. My phone began to ring. We reached out to Mr. Kellogg and shared our concern. I am opposed to the spending increase and commend Selectman Kellogg for hearing us and for his decision to make a reduction in the spending increase. Thank you, Mr. Kellogg. We fully recognize that you, our elected representatives, have invested many hours going over this budget, and your efforts are sincerely appreciated, and I know you have more hours to come. We ask you to recognize that we who oppose these increases are not questioning your judgment. We are simply saying that this amount exceeds our ability to pay. My husband and I use the tax calculator provided on the town website, and we can work with the new numbers. Four percent is twice what we expected, but it's less horrible than six percent. We intend to vote yes on the spending increase as set forth by Mr. Kellogg. We are aware of many others who are not swayed by a five-hundred-thousand-dollar cut. I encourage you to take another look at the school side and reduce spending, reduce the spending increase just a little more to make this a one-and-done budget season. However, I assure you that restoring even one dollar of the amount Mr. Kellogg has cut will quickly switch our votes to affirm no. Do not misinterpret any no vote at a referendum. It means cut more, and under no circumstances should any no vote ever be considered as a reason to spend more, ever. Thank you to each of you on the council, the Board of Ed, the Board of Finance, and the other committees and town departments for your sacrifice of your time, your volunteers, we appreciate it. And also to Mr. Kellogg, who is surely getting harsh abuse for his brave cut to the spending increase. Thank you for hearing us, Mr. Kellogg, and I hope I can thank you all for hearing us too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think it's, I mean, it's Bob Gere.
Dear Town Council members, I wrote this. Oh, I'm sorry. Bob Gere. Thirty-two, Robin Lane, Monroe. Okay. Dear Town Council members, thank you for your service to our town and the opportunity to speak. I'm a twenty-five-year resident of our town. I came here tonight to present you with some facts about our town that concern me. Under the town budget being proposed, Monroe will have the highest mill rate, thirty-six-point-five-one in all of Fairfield County, save Bridgeport. Our town, Monroe, will have the highest mill rate in all of Fairfield County. Let that sink in for a moment. I went to the Connecticut Office of Policy and Management website to see what the mill rates were in our surrounding towns for comparison. Here they are: Trumbull, thirty-four-point-seven-four; Shelton, twenty-two-point-four-two; Newtown, thirty-four-point-seven-seven; Easton, thirty-one-point-three-three; Oxford, twenty-three-point-eight-four. Why does every one of our neighboring towns have a lower mill rate? I recently attended a presentation by Marion Kam, our incredible part-time social services director. She said the food pantry is serving over two-hundred-and-fifty households in need of food assistance. She said the greatest need is among our senior population. So before you raise taxes again, please consider the additional burden you are placing on our most vulnerable Monroe citizens. Lastly, lots of news stories, rumors about the Board of Education. Since sixty-five percent of our town budget is for the Board of Education, and you are considering a two-million-two-hundred-and-ninety-four-thousand-dollar increase to the Board of Education budget over last year, I went to the Board of Education website, and I was astonished to find that our school student population has declined by twenty-seven percent in the last twelve years. From forty-four, over forty-four hundred students in our school system to just under thirty-two hundred today. That's from the Board of Ed website. The number of students enrolled in our schools is lower by twelve hundred students, yet the Board of Education budget never goes down, no matter how much enrollment declines. How is that possible? It makes no sense. I think a thriving school system is critical, but there appears to be no correlation between the number of students in our schools and the Board of Education budget. Why? I respectfully request that the Town Council, the Board of Finance, and the First Selectment require more accountability and better financial oversight of the Board of Education budget. Sincerely, me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? You coming up, Mr. Hustler, or no? Anybody else wish to speak? Oh, I said, Mr. Hustler.
Sorry, I missed your cue. Lee Hustler, two-seven-two Stanley Road. I won't rehash what I said two weeks ago, but I still stand on that. But I would, I would like to ask you to really, as you slice and dice and go through the budget, but to really give consideration to the older folks in town, the people who have put this town on our shoulders for the many years until we got to this point. I think we need to take a look at and listen to some of us. I know there's not a whole bunch of us in here at my age, but I, please, take a really good look at what you're doing, what you're cutting, and where you're cutting, if you have to cut. Let's face it, we have a fairly large budget for a small town, I think, and only a third of that stays here in this, in this building. The rest of it goes out, and I don't want to get into that. But I think we don't have a whole lot to change or to take away. I think the budget is pretty austere, but keep us in mind, the white-haired people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? So you, sir?
Unlike everybody else, I don't have any prepared remarks. Just Rob Hardy, I'm twenty-nine Kimberly Drive. So, real quick, just the only thing I want to add to, some folks stole some thunder that I might have come up with, so, just the only thing I wanted to add is that, you know, year over year, the Board of Ed and the school, the school system administration tell us that we need to advocate for our children, right? We need to advocate for our children. When the, when the state government cut the public education funding to the town by five million dollars, we were told we have to advocate for our children, and we voted ourselves a tax increase. Spending money is not the only way to advocate for our children. You know, we're a community of like-minded families who moved to town because we want a supportive education system, and in part, I think that's what led to the creation of our school system as we have it today. Our schools, our kids do well in school, not because of the money we spend on them, but because we care about their schooling, from homes where we put a priority on their education and their upbringing. So the idea that we have to keep spending more and more money on them year over year for them to do well in school, especially when, I forget who the gentleman was, said when enrollment is dropping, that's a non sequitur to me. So I think, you know, we can do better with less. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Oh, yes, yeah.
Good evening. Ray Giovani, G-I-O-V-A-N-N-I, twenty-two, Carmen Lane, Monroe, Connecticut, of course. I wanted to thank each of you for your dedicated and passion to try to help our town. We love this town. I have a child here in the local school. They do a phenomenal job, as we've all admitted to, to their credit and to their consideration and their care. We have, I have a job that I get to speak to a lot of town folk who come and sit down with me at my office, and everyone seems to be always bringing up this issue about the taxes in our town. We have commissions like yourselves that were diligently to try to better our town, try to increase, you know, the grant list passionately as well, bringing prospects to our town. So it's a challenge, but I'm saying that everyone's working together, which is great. There's collaboration there that we can all be proud of. I just hope that in our wisdom and in our care for our children, for our students, for our town, for the grant list, for the appreciation values that everyone's looking to achieve, that we could mutually come up with some solutions and maybe have a consultative approach to figuring out how can we get the efficiencies that everyone is sort of talking about unanimously so that we can afford our town. So that's my concern. I'm also trying to speak for the minority a little bit, and what I mean by that is, as every year, and this year too, I see and heard earlier that our First Selectment always has a challenge, no matter who sits in that seat, trying to budget and balance this, and there's always one approach. I'm going to take away from the town side to make sure the school gets made whole because it's important, rightfully so. But then what about all the, you know, all the employees that are on that side of the fence? You know, so when a public works individual working for the town side is getting paid four and five dollars less an hour because he or she decided to jump over to the education side, they're paid five, six dollars an hour the next day for the same exact job, job-grade performance. So I'm saying there's a dichotomy there about what's going on, and if we keep this approach up, the minority, those poor employees on that other side of the fence, are never going to get their due increases of the three to the nine percent over three years because they're on the short end of the fence, which means most public work people should really go over to the education side and then get there because it's a faster approach to the finish line that they can afford to stay in our town and feed their families. And so there's something wrong with that. And I wish that, again, this is all kept in consideration as we help move our Monroe forward collectively. The business folks come and tell me, the ones who own the strip malls and the landowners who have big stakes in our town are complaining about their tax base. So what do they do with triple-net rents? They pass it back on to those storefronts. Those poor storefront people are all, you know, barely taking a paycheck home, trying to afford to pay the landlords for their spaces. So it's a big cyclical downspin when you look at the whole picture, and I'm not saying anyone's wrong, I'm not saying that this is an easy fix, and you've already, I'm sure, realized, these are some of the concerns that we deal with on a day-by-day, hour-by-hour basis to make the small businesses in our town thrive, and it's not easy because of what happens. So I'm just saying that that's my observation, and again, I thank you for your passion. I think the teachers, I was a former teacher in Bridgeport for ten years, as previously stated by Mr. Antinazzi. I was a part of that process, that went to jail to make sure that there was binding arbitration for this state of Connecticut. So I understand that ten years of that, what that meant, and now the pendulum swung too far the other direction, as always. And so hopefully, with some kind of consultative approach, we can get a commission together or volunteers or hire a consulting group that can look at the efficiencies and from a third-party vendor who can really say to us whether we have capacity, whether we have efficiencies, whether we have the right structure, whether we are doing things properly from a, you know, from a fresh set of eyes instead of, you know, the Board of Ed who gets feedback and tries to make great decisions based on their passion for why they've accepted those roles. All marvelous, but maybe there's another way of looking at the same thing twice to come up with a different solution that would help all of you make the right decisions and help all of our town people, you know, be proud of our town as we all do, and then work collaboratively to get a really wonderful life experience for all that we have to consider. Thank you very much.
Anybody else wish to speak? Yes?
Hi, my name is Nina Gagnon. I live at one sixty Pepper Street. Tonight I should be at Stepney Elementary. My son is going into kindergarten next year. I have another son that is in first grade right now, and both classes seem to be overflowing. My son is one of twenty-four, twenty-five kids in his class. The rest of Stepney first grade is at twenty-four or twenty-five students. I emailed Mike Manjos, Ron Budofsky, and Ken Cog with my concerns, and with respect, you sent, told me to, that you forwarded it to the superintendent that he gets to make the decisions on the budget, but with respect, he cannot make, he can't get another teacher unless he has the money to do so. At this point, I don't think my son is going to have a smaller classroom, and I think the, I don't envy your position and what you have to do. I can't even begin to think about how hard it is, but overcrowding in schools is detrimental to students' education, and I think there's going to be big repercussions long-term. We're talking, you know, ten, twenty years. These kids are not going to be learning as well. They're not going to have as much positive thinking when it comes to their schools and their learning experiences. Anecdotally, I feel that, as I was a former teacher, mathematics in the high school, only a few years because I decided to stay home with my children, but having smaller classrooms, you can actually get to know your kids and be able to create a real relationship and work on their learning abilities, challenges, and their difficulties. My son is an exceptional learner. I love him to death. He's great, but he's lacking in some ways. His math skills are through the roof, but he doesn't like to write. And at one point, I got a report from my, from the teacher that he had only done one writing assignment in an entire lesson, an entire unit, one, one done. And I think partially it's because she has twenty-four, twenty-five kids to maintain and to teach, and he's being lost in the cracks because he's smart in other ways. Also, classroom management is a huge thing in classrooms. My son is being bullied. There's no doubt about it. Today, he said that everyone was calling him Pooper. His name is Cooper. I grew up being made fun of in school. And I don't want this to happen to him, and it's happening during the line to lunch because it can get away, the kids can get away with it. This might happen in a smaller classroom, but it might not. It's more likely that the teacher will be able to maintain class order and make sure that these things aren't happening. And this is a concern that's been happening most of this year, is making fun of people and bullying and all of that. And I commend you. I know this is a tough thing, but you have to think about the future as well, that these children, if you cut from them, you're cutting out your future. So I, that's what I need to say. Sorry. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? I don't see anybody. Nobody else? So we're stopping this part of our assignment, and we're going to go on to discussing which departments. Okay? So thank you for coming. You're welcome to stay. All right, so we're on to the next, as we said before, you know, some of us don't think we need much of that, but which departments? Mr. Kellogg, are you going to make the list, or?
I will absolutely make the list.
No, we don't.
Well, let me re, I will write down the list. Yeah.
Correct. Yeah, so what would you like? Jen?
Yeah. Initially.
Okay.
Give a minute to follow.
Give her, give her a minute to follow.
I wrote the names down for you, if that does any... But I need them back. I need the other side back. Okay, so Jen, any departments that you want. I'm just starting with you and going across.
I would like to hear from EDC, planning...
Now you're gonna have to drop down because Carol's came here with the other people.
I would like to hear from if everybody else is in agreement, EDC, planning and zoning, and social services.
We don't have to be in agreement because whoever, whoever says whatever, we're gonna definitely hear from everybody who's saying anything. Okay? Jason?
In addition to what Councilwoman Aguilar, I'd like social services and senior center same time, the same person, so we could get both...
This is the same person.
So we could do both of those jointly. HR, finance, public works, library, parks and rec. And then, again, as a joint, we could probably do PD, fire, and EMS.
Relax up to Mr. Kellogg.
In order to save time.
Okay, Mrs. Martin?
It's all separate, pardon me.
Right, but...
I can't, I can't guarantee it'll be on the same night, based on availability.
That's fine.
Mrs. Martin?
I'm thinking EDC, public works, and park and rec are three that would be of top interest to me.
So obviously, if they're the same ones, you don't, you know that. Sean?
DPW and PD.
DPW and PD? I'll pass because they've said just the ones I would...
I should have just said pass as well. It's covered, it's covered up to this point.
I, I don't have any additional.
Okay, Terry?
Me neither.
No additional.
No additional.
Okay.
Okay, so can I clarify, please?
Yep, I have.
Make sure that we have a final list. EDC, planning and zoning. I assume that's just the plan, just the planning and zoning department, not the other, just the planning and zoning department, right? Social services, senior center, human resources, finance department, public works department, library, parks and rec, police department, the fire department? I assume you're referring to all three volunteer fire departments?
It's...
And what about the fire marshal? I just want to be clear that...
Not the fi, not the fire marshal from the...
So just all three, all three?
And just in preparation and getting them, it's, my questions for them are actually more on capital, but based off of Mr. Manjos's ask that we have capital kind of decided on our end before it goes there.
Yeah, I mean, I, typically, we do the capital presentations at a, I mean, obviously, you can ask it all, but I mean, other, the plan was to present the capital all at one set.
Right. So, and, and that's why I'm, I'm fine either way with that, but my questions for them are on capital, on capital items. The other questions for them, I actually think you can probably answer on your own, so.
So I guess, I guess my question is, I mean, presumably, we are gonna have a meeting on capital.
The concern I have is that year, we had the meeting on capital.
Yeah.
And then after that meeting, it, it, we just had the single meeting and then didn't have a chance to bring department heads back in after the fact.
Okay.
So if we are going to have a chance after the fact to do that, I'm fine holding off. But if we are going to do it how we did it the past two years, and the capital meeting is just going to be a discussion, and we don't have the information ahead of time, then I'd rather be able to ask it beforehand.
Okay. I mean, my preference would be to get the operational questions done in the immediate workshops, and I'd certainly happy to make sure we come up with a capital schedule that's...
Then I, then I, then I don't need those three departments for the operational side.
All right, so I'll hold off on that for now. And EMS, you also had on the list.
All three. It's, actually, no EMS. I had questions on the actual budget as well, so...
Okay, okay. So...
That's all of them.
That's the list I had. I'm gonna leave the fire, three fire departments off for now, presuming we'll, and we'll actually get a, a clear capital plan or budget or meeting plan together.
Thank you.
Yes.
So just, just some questions, or maybe it's guidance that we could talk about? I, I'm assuming we're not looking for full-blown department presentations. These are already strategically or tactically set up questions that we have. Is that, is that correct?
It's strategic questions. Some, for me, some of the is, is strategic questions online. The others, as I stated earlier, for me, are getting an idea of, based off of this, what the future budget looks like. So I don't think it needs to be a full-blown presentation from any, from...
I mean, I've asked every, every department to prepare their typical narrative that has all the history, the past year, goals, and so that hopefully serves the intended purpose, so you don't try to standardize everything, so the same set of information. So, yeah, we'll, I'll make sure departments are prepared to speak to that and any of the questions you may have on the details. But I was not expecting them to, you know, I don't want people wasting time on PowerPoints and things that I think you have information. The intent was to give it to you in the budget document.
Yep.
Good. That's what I was going after.
Great.
So could I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Before, before we do, I, I would, I was going to say for most of those, as we're scheduling, I would imagine they would only need to be ten-minute to fifty, with the exception of the big ones like public works, maybe parks and rec. I, I don't know what else. I would imagine these only need to be ten-to-fifteen-minute time slots.
Very good.
From my view. I don't know if anybody disagrees with that.
Don't disagree.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourning at the seven...
Who's the first and who's the second?
The second two.
So Terry was the motion. I'll second the motion.
Okay, so at seven thirty-two. All of those in favor?